Welcome to the Xenia City Council Regular Meeting of March 27, 2025. At this time, we will all rise for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance, led by Councilman Ethan Reynolds. All right, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I call our meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Urshel, Councilman Reynolds.
Here.
Councilman Crawford.
Here.
Councilman Probst.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Councilwoman Therese.
Here.
President Smith.
Here. Mayor Urshel is out tonight at this time for family obligation. Would anyone like to make a motion to excuse him?
I would like to make a motion to excuse him.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Therese, followed by, seconded by Councilman Reynolds.
No, Crawford.
Any concerns or questions on that?
Crawford.
Crawford, I'm so sorry, okay? Great, thank you. Did you get that? Okay, thank you. Can we get a roll call to excuse him, please?
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilman Probst?
Yeah.
Councilman Walker?
Yep.
Councilwoman Therese?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes from our March 13, 2025 meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Thank you, moved by Councilman Probst and seconded by
Second.
Councilman Walker, thank you. Do we have any additional corrections to the minutes? And seeing none, we'll get a roll call on this, please.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We have no special presentation scheduled for tonight's meeting. Next is an opportunity for audience comments. If anybody in the audience would care to come and address City Council, we would ask that you come to the podium at this time, give us your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three to four minutes. All right, since no one has come forward, closed audience comment portion. We have no old business for tonight, only new business. First item is ordinance 2025-06 titled an emergency. This is amending ordinance 2025-02 to provide appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Xenia for the fiscal year ending December 31 of this year and declaring emergency. So in absence of our Finance Director, Mr. Duke, we have Mr. Lake here tonight. Would you care to expand on that, please?
Yes, thank you. The appropriation ordinance in front of you is, has two items, one for $50,000 and one for $30,000, both kind of related to some 2024 expenses that weren't encumbered. So they're just kind of repeats from last year that weren't encumbered. The $50,000 is related to an art consultant project related to the Market District and the $30,000 is related to dispatch. We had provided stipends to the dispatchers. It was meant to be broken up into two installments. One was paid in the fall of 2024 and the second to be paid in 2025. This was due to their staffing levels, incentive for extra hardware they've had to do with their many levels.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lake? All right, if we have no questions, at this time, I will ask if anyone would care to make a motion to approve this amendments.
So moved.
Thank you, moved by Councilwoman Therese. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Councilman Crawford. Any questions or concerns? Right, seek approval of the majority of what, four or five? Is that right? Four? Just four?
It's emergency, so.
All right, we'll go for a roll call, please.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2025-07, an introduction tonight granting a pipeline easement to Vectren Energy for portions of city-owned properties on West Church Street. So we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Mayorman.
Thanks, sir. I'd like to give a little bit of background here on the item. Public utility systems are required in their business interest to have plans to periodically replace aged infrastructure. Certainly in the community of Xenia H, we have some of that. This particular case, CenterPoint Energy or Vectren Energy, doing business at CenterPoint, is seeking replacement of its main system in our community. And they are working in the vicinity of the Market District project downtown and along Church Street in order to minimize disruption resulting from their gas main replacement that spans Church Street on that east side of North Detroit. Vectren is working parallel to Market District construction that we have underway and we're trying to coordinate those separate projects. The replacement east of North Detroit Street is being completed at the city's request again in advance of these street improvement projects that we're pursuing on East Detroit Street. That replacement is in existing right-of-way. However, on the west side of Church Street, the replacement will take place behind existing sidewalk outside of our right-of-way, and this requires an additional easement. The legal description and exhibits attached to the agenda item report present the request for a 10-foot-wide easement on two parcels, both of which are owned by the city. One parcel is a .0959 acre parcel. This is located at the corner of North King Street and East Church Street in front of the Green County Historical Society, excuse me. That parcel is located in front of Huntington Bank. Then there's a .0335 acre parcel that's located in front of the Historical Society there on Church Street. So the request is essentially to provide easements in those two parcels that the city owns. We have a longstanding and very valued relationship with our local gas company that have been very good, private utility partners to work with, and they're working in collaboration with us to get this replacement done before we're doing any roadwork, which we appreciate. So it's beneficial for both parties to facilitate this replacement, and to do so, we need this easement. So we are requesting introduction of the ordinance this evening that would authorize that easement across those two parcels. And it would be for a dollar, because again, it's in our community's best interest, so we're not looking to profit off of these.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayorman?
Just one quick question. Huntington Bank and Historical Society, have they been involved at all since I impact their properties a little bit?
Yeah, CenterPoint is pretty good about contacting residents in the areas they work, and I will also say they are very good at contacting us ahead of time. They usually meet with us about a year in advance of any project work that they're going to do. So again, given the communication they have with us and what we've experienced in terms of their communication with residents or impacted businesses, they've been very good about that. I will note, as we were preparing for this evening, that parcel there at Huntington is a little larger, and it incorporates some improvements that Huntington's made that are actually on the parcel. So we did a little bit of exploration here, and we're not aware of any lease agreement that exists for that. So I might just note that at some point in the future, we may come back with authorization to lease that as such. Again, there's no reason to charge them. They're doing a good business in our community, but it is noteworthy, given this project right next to it, that there are quite a few improvements on the city parcel that are Huntington and.
And that was part of the reason why I asked that, because I mean, you can see that portion of that parking lot and some of that.
Yes, Mr. Booker has that in his queue with the net. We talked about it here today, so yeah, we'll look into that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mayorman? All right, so this night, tonight, all we're asking for is an introduction. Who would care to make that motion or introduction? Introduced by Councilman Reynolds, thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2025-18. This is waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase and installation of equipment from Comnet Solutions to update the city's internal telephone infrastructure. Mr. Mayorman?
Thank you, sir. The backend equipment for the city's internal telephony infrastructure, including the technologies for our VoIP phone calls and communications across all city locations, it's reached its end of its maintainable life. This is mission-critical infrastructure for us, necessary to facilitate, you know, primary communications among our facilities. And the technology covers hardware, like the actual phones and servers, the networks that carry the calls, and features that make our communications a lot easier, things like voicemail and call routing and so forth. The project referenced in this agenda report would replace outdated equipment with some modern tools. This would improve how we connect with residents and manage our daily operations. Up-to-date secure equipment is needed in addition to executing an active maintenance agreement with warranty and with a qualified vendor. Excuse me, we would have a maintenance agreement in addition to the equipment with the vendor, who is of course Comnet Solutions LLC. Comnet Solutions is the only company currently servicing our older system. They have years of hands-on experience managing the outdated infrastructure that we currently have, but they have also a unique understanding of its limitations, how it's employed in our system and setup and so forth. So they have an awareness and expertise that really no other vendor possesses presently. Introducing a new provider that's unfamiliar with the technology and with the age that it has, as well as our configuration, we think would create some disruptions, potential delays. So we just think it's a smoother, more efficient process to stick with this vendor. The Information Technology Department did approach our Administrative Steering Committee, and after review of the options, the Steering Committee did endorse moving forward with this and recommending it to council. So this evening, for these reasons, staff is requesting council waive competitive bidding pursuant to Charter Section 9.06B6. That would further authorize us to purchase the necessary equipment from Comnet Solutions. They quoted an amount of $138,270.78.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayorman?
Just one question. These upgrades will take us to 2028, maybe?
I think it's at least a 10-year solution.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, yeah. The current system that we have, I think some of which migrated from our old facility, and we've done some additions to it, but it's lasted us pretty well, and a lot of the devices will be reused. It's the systems running the devices that are being upgraded. So yeah, this should have pretty good life, and that maintenance agreement attached to this will help to extend the life as well.
Very nice, thank you. Great, any other questions? All right, if we've seen no other questions, at this time, I'll seek the motion to waive competitive bidding and authorize the purchase.
I move for Resolution 2025-18.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Therese. All right, there's no other questions. We'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2025-19. This is waiving competitive bidding and awarding the 2025 street paving program to John R. Jurgensen Company. And at this time, we'll turn the floor over to Mr. Mayorman.
Thank you, sir. On February 12 of this year, competitive bids were received for three major roadway rehabilitation projects to be completed yet this year, in large part because the city solicited competitive bids for these projects so early in the cycle. All three of our projects, low bids, came in well under the budgeted amounts. As a result, we have availability with the residual funds that we otherwise would have spent on those projects to add some additional street rehabilitation work to our schedule this year, as well as some residual funds for our local street budget. So at council's direction, staff evaluated additional street rehab work that might be pursued this year, which would meet the strategic goal of rehabilitating neighborhood-level collective streets so that we can actually get more into the neighborhoods. After careful review, staff is recommending repaving of Ottawa Drive from West Second Street to Pueblo Drive and Mississippi Drive from Colorado to New Mexico Drive. The estimated cost to rehabilitate Ottawa is $611,853.12. The estimated cost for Mississippi is $270,924.25 for a project total of $882,777.37. We would note that the difference in cost between the two streets is really rooted in the need to do a significant amount of curving and apron replacement on Ottawa Drive. Of course, as we've discussed with council previously, those component units of our roadway, if not correctly connected and sealed with the roadway, lead to ponding of water and degradation. So where we have an opportunity to do that concrete restoration, it allows the asphalt itself to last much longer. So that is the difference in that cost between those two stretches of road. These funds are available in our budget, and in order to stretch them as far as possible and not, in an attempt to not have to necessarily go out and rebid later this season, we did pursue some conversation with John R. Jurgensen, who was awarded two of our three projects, grant-funded projects this year. John R. Jurgensen has indicated that they would honor unit prices equal to those submitted for our Sheilin Road and Tyler Road project. And so with that, we're able to secure this additional work at a very competitive price. So based on that, we think that it is advantageous to move forward. The resolution as presented would allow us to execute an agreement and waive competitive bidding, honoring those bid prices from before applied to this particular project or these two roadways, and bring some good value. So we're excited to bring this to the table this evening and request your permission to move forward.
All right, great. Who's got any questions? Thank you.
Just have one with comment and a question. I just want to thank Chris and you and your staff, all you guys did to help shepherd this along, get this project moving, and then City Manager, I just wanted to know, when will we get the PCI back grading?
Yeah.
And like, once we get it back, how do you think it's going to change kind of our construction plans for the future here?
Good question. I mean, obviously, I know streets is probably, as a council, your top priority right now, and trying to figure out a means for a long-term solution is a deep concern that you have. We have been tasked with, some members of council, to look at some additional information, trying to develop some additional modeling. In fact, we've taken some time this week, and this is outside of the new PCI, and I'll touch on that in a second. So we have put quite a bit of time in last week and this week in developing some additional modeling, a summary of which I do have ready, and we can provide if council liked that this evening. But we have that information available, and then the new PCI, we're expecting, the results are done. We had a meeting this past week providing some information to the consultant that will help them to finalize the modeling and that. So by the end of next week, we should also have results back from them with some additional modeling using the up-to-date information. In fact, Eric, if you want to run back, I have on my desk that summary sheet, and we can run some copies real quick, so all of you have that information. Again, what he's getting is essentially three different models or sets of models, looking at different approaches. All of this is intended to provide initial information to all of you, understanding at what price points can you get, what types of work done, how far does that stretch, whether there's no increase in funding, whether there's increases at different amount from different sources. So again, this is some preliminary information we can provide tonight, but we're expecting by the end of next week. We'll have to take a final look at that next week to make sure that it's, you know, what we had asked and presented in the right way. But again, I think within the next week and a half, we can have that PCI information back and probably available to council.
So during our work session for our next meeting, is it okay if we kind of like go over that all as council?
It's up to you guys, however you guys want to approach it. You know, we will have, I think, finally sufficient data to be able to speak. Chris, would you agree, yes, speak to, speak to most of the, most of the models or the approaches that council members have enquired about? And again, we can give you some context in terms of at those price points with various approaches, how much additional work can you get, and sort of qualitatively, what does that, what does that incorporate in the way of a fix? But again, in terms of how you guys want to proceed, you know, with that conversation, it's really, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, personally, I would like for all of us to have that discussion at the next work session. Especially with all the updated numbers in the PCI.
So you're saying at your next meeting, to take some time?
Yeah.
Because your next roundtable would be your second meeting in April.
Oh, could we do it at the first meeting in April?
We could. I will warn, and I was going to mention later, later this evening in the City Manager's report, your, as of right now, the agendas for your two April meetings
Are pretty full.
are pretty full. In addition, as I've forecasted, I think we will have some additional work session conversations that'll be pretty weighty, related to both dispatch operations, healthcare in our community, a couple other topics, thank you, sir. And so, you know, we had talked about having a special session perhaps next month as well. In fact, someone asked about that before the meeting, so maybe a little early to forecast that right now, but I think this is a significant priority that you all need to talk about. At the same time, we do have a couple other pretty pressing priorities, so I think April will be a busy month, but we can, you know, we can work to schedule something if that's your preference.
I mean, what does everyone else feel on council, to have their meeting about that in the first one?
I think we should go first.
Yeah.
So maybe we can incorporate, I mean, I think we can have materials ready, and maybe we just incorporate. We'll look at, we'll get back with council leadership to figure out how we incorporate that, whether it's a work session or part of the regular session.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Mr. Mayorman, I just, I need a little education here. On the driveway aprons, is there any, do we have any recourse or any payback to the city for it?
Typically, it's part of, it's oftentimes within right-of-way, and it's typically part of what we pick up. You, I mean, the recourse is, you know, the council has the ability to do assessments on these things, but the scale of what is needed citywide is not consistent. You know, some neighborhoods, these aprons are newer and in pretty good shape, other neighborhoods, they're pretty decrepit. So you'd have wild variability in terms of what you would charge to individuals. Again, that policy option is available to you. That is a means by which you can have these things paid for, but historically, we've incorporated as much as we can through, especially through some of the new fee structure that we have with those concrete fees, we can, we can stretch those dollars a lot further and get a lot, a lot more of that concrete work done.
We'll talk again on this subject.
Yeah. Sure.
So just a quick question. On the Ottawa project, it looks like, is there a lot of improvements they had to make on the curb or build out? Because there's a lot of topsoil on that bed, so.
So in the grand scheme of things, the topsoil cost is minor relative to, you know, the asphalt and the concrete. But to answer your question, the reason why you see that as far as a quantity is because when you, when you have to replace a curb, when you build a curb, you have to put forms down. Well, in the process of digging to be able to construct your forms to pour your curb, you're obviously taking out a little grass. So basically, that is always, that's in all of our cost estimates. That's for yard restoration essentially.
Sure, I understand. Okay, great. Thank you, Chris. Yeah, all right.
Mike, just one other final note. The methodologies for these two, these roads are varied as well. You'll see a lot more again of the apron and concrete restoration on Ottawa because it's needed. You'll also see more base restoration where on Mississippi, we feel like the base is in pretty good shape, so it's basically a thicker course of asphalt that's going on Mississippi. So, you know, again, I know we've had a lot of conversation about what drives what component part or what component cost of these projects, and why does it vary so much from roadway to roadway? It's because from roadway to roadway, depending on the age of the road, the amount of wear, the utility infrastructure, all those things factor into what's needed, you know, to get a quality finished product. This case, you have a lot more accessory work on Ottawa, where Mississippi, it's mostly concentrated just on a four-inch course of asphalt. It's very complex. It's, there's a lot. I know there's a lot of moving parts, and that's why we do need to take plenty of time to discuss what, you know, what your intentions are in moving in the future.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll seek a motion to approve the Resolution 2025-19 and waive competitive bidding. Thank you, moved by Councilman Crawford, seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Any other questions? All right, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2025-20. This is added to the revised agenda. This is approving financial management policies that address reserve requirement standards, minimum balances, and other parameters for resource allocation. So at this time, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Lake.
Thank you. The policy before you better defines the resource, the reserves and balances to be maintained in the various city funds and creates a mechanism to incrementally increase the city's reserve, which will help maintain or improve various metrics such as bond ratings as we go through different issuances. The goal is hopefully to get to 25% for reserve balance at some point in time, slowly as, you know, cash funds are available. Any questions?
Yep, who's got questions?
Just a quick statement. I just want to thank you, Jason, and Ryan, and Danette, and Brent for this. I know we really talk about this a lot in the Budget Committee, and I was really pushing for this because I think it's a huge thing for us to get, to allocate that 20% so that we can hit, you know, our financial reserve policies, you know, I think by taking this step, you know, we're going to strengthen our financial situation here, make sure that we are a good financial footing and preparing ourselves for the future. So I really thank you guys for all the work on this, and actually, we had a lot of discussion about this and how to get there, so, thank you.
Other questions?
I do, I do appreciate this. However, I, when this came across to me to add to the budget, I agreed to put it on the budget, but I don't necessarily agree with this. I really think that we are setting ourselves up with a policy that we may have to break later if we have to dip into reserves. And I don't want to be told we can't reach our reserves or what reserves are for because we set a policy to work against ourselves. So unless I misunderstand this, this is setting a new reserve policy by the council. And this was brought tonight as a resolution where we haven't had a work discussion on this. So I would recommend tonight, in respect for the mayor, to table this to the next meeting so everybody can have input on this. How do you guys feel about that?
I'd like to do that. Yeah. Do I need to make a recommendation that we take on?
Are you okay with that?
I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not changing anything except for going from, what are we at now? 17% to 20%? It's the same policies we have essentially, except for it's increasing the threshold from 17 to 20.
Based on cash flow?
Yeah.
At the year. We would look to see if there's a cash flow above $200,000, and anything above that $200,000, if we had positive cash flow, 20% would go towards the reserve, 80% would still be available to be designated, however council sees fit, including street rehab. So it's an increment, like I said, increment slowly over years, we'll hopefully be able to build that reserve up into a higher standard.
So what's your projection? I mean, when do you think we could get to that full maturity?
That's a very difficult question. For, to get to 25%, I mean, it could take 10, 15 years. It's really hard to say because it's all going to be based on cash flow.
But this is just 20%, not 25. This is the step towards that eventually.
Yeah, to be clear, this, any, anything over the current reserve, you would take that amount, 80% of it's available under the guidelines that's, that are introduced in this policy, because currently you have no guidelines on how you use that reserve. It's one of the things we talked about with the Budget Committee, there should be some guidelines, so we incorporated those. 80% of any, of cash flow over your reserve is available for whatever, operations, streets, whatever you feel necessary. 20% would be added toward increasing the reserve to a maximum of 25%. And to your question, Councilman Crawford, it's hard to say because we can't know what performance will be year to year. If you look at the performance we've had the last number of years, it would still be quite a few years, I think, before you would get to that point that you're topping out of the 25%, which is more, more in the ballpark of the reserve amounts that other communities have. We're a little on the low side with the amount that we have today, if that gives you context. But again, if this is a conversation you guys want to wait on, we certainly can. It's up to you.
I mean, yeah, but I'll interject, we just lost $600,000 in revenue on a levy, and now we're trying to increase our reserves, and we're also trying to put a street program together. We, we can't do both. We can't increase our reserves and allocate enough money for our streets. That's my opinion. So I would say right now, I would not be in favor of this because I think we're setting a policy that we, we're not going to be able to follow. That reserves, as if I understand it right, the years that I've been on council, reserves are there for the privilege of council if there's a need to dip into reserves. I, I don't know, other than COVID, of any reason why we have ever had to reach into reserves for an emergency as a city, as a municipality, unless I'm wrong. And if I'm wrong, correct me.
No, we actually did back when, with the, with the recession back in 2008, '09, we had very little cash flow. And we would have exhausted our reserves and put it, put the city at fiscal default had we not spent down reserves and then eventually laid off substantial portion of staff. Those staff were later restored only after the income tax increase, and over time, we were able to build some of that reserve back up. COVID would be another example. But again, I think proper perspective on what that reserve is, it's not just an emergency fund. It's also a measure by which the state and financial institutions evaluate the fiscal health of the city. The lower that is, the lower our cash to debt ratio and other measures. The higher it is, the better our evaluation is from a borrowing standpoint, from a creditworthy standpoint, because we have more cash reserve, more cash on hand. So as our expenditures continue to increase, our reserve is increasing. We also understand that buying power of, of the dollar is not increasing. And frankly, we are in a position that we could improve our overall credit rating, but factors like this would have to improve in order to do that. So there's, it is a reserve, and it's a, it's a hedge of protection in case there are major revenue shifts. You have something you could fall back on and have some deficit spending for a short period. It might be used for an emergency if you have a natural disaster and you need immediate cash flow before state or federal assistance. That's one of the uses that this could be. But again, part of the changes in the policy identify those, those, those reasons that you might dip into that reserve. Previously, you know, or up to this point, councils had no specific policy on how those reserves would be used. But again, it's, it's up to you all. If you want to table this and have further discussion later, that's your prerogative, and so we can certainly accommodate that.
So my question, if we set this policy, we're, we are reaching to 20% reserve where we're currently at 17%.
No, you're at 17. The ultimate goal would be 25%. So remember, you have a reserve, which is the unused monies that we hold sort of in, in the bank, so to speak. Annually, any monies that are generated or any revenues that are generated that are not encumbered, not used for operations, is our, our cash flow. So that cash flow, if it's positive, what this policy says is for our, for our key operating funds, you would take 20% of whatever's above the reserve requirement and put it toward savings, toward increasing up to that 25% reserve. Eighty percent of that cash flow would be for streets, operations, you have a special project that you want to put it toward. So again, 80 to 20 on, on any of the cash flow, 20% going toward reserve requirement, maxing out at 25% where that's 17% now. The other 80% would go toward whatever discretionary projects or, I mean, you could save more if you wanted to, but you could also spend it on whatever you, whatever was appropriate.
And this also allows us for, in the future, with interest rates, we might get a better deal with a better cash reserve, correct?
Correct.
So if we do go after these roads and things like that, we have a better ability to get some interest.
And I do understand that, but I think right now, what I'm hearing from citizens, unless I'm deaf, is I want every available dollar that we have in our city on a street program, either this year, next year, or five years. They don't want to put that money in the bank. They want to drive on smooth roads. When we're tying money up in reserve, we're not utilizing that money on our street program. Am I wrong?
You could utilize it, but to, to use, to use it, to use an analogy, most of us who own a home will have a bank account to cover any unforeseen incidences with our home. You could use that money to put a roof on, a new roof on that you don't need, but you're dwindling that amount down. If you have another emergency, you don't have any money to draw on for that purpose. Or, as we've said, again, these are key metrics that are looked at in terms of our fiscal health and credit worthiness. If you were to spend that reserve down, I guarantee you, I guarantee you, the city would be in fiscal watch because we do not have the general fund metrics to, 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 to stay out of the, the warning criteria that the state has.
Right. I'm not saying we spend down our reserves. What I'm saying is we don't need to increase our reserves right now. We need to put every available dollar, in my opinion, every additional dollar what the cities want us to do, and that's put towards our streets. If we get an extra increase for something, then great, there's more money we can put in the streets. That's all I'm hearing when I'm out in the community is Wes, what are we doing about our streets? Okay, and great, yeah, we're allocating, we're getting five or six streets done. They want action soon. They're, they're tired of waiting, and I'm tired of just saying, we can't do it anymore. So that's just my opinion. I just think right now, I'm not in favor of this. I think if, I would like to hear more discussion on it. I, I'm not ready to vote for it. If push comes to shove and you want my vote tonight, I'm not in favor of this. That's just my opinion, but I'm one of seven. Anybody else?
It sounds like we have great information coming from both sides, and it sounds like that leaves a lot of questions in people's minds, especially with having two new council members that have not really been a part of this prior discussion and have not been, you know, brought up to speed. So I think what would behoove us at this point, if we did table it, had some time to talk about it. Can we do that?
It's a pleasure, council.
You can certainly table it.
Yeah, would that be all right? Don't just make a motion to table this? Okay, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and table resolution 2025-020.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I'll second. And again, and keep in mind, we're, we're going to be discussing this in the next meeting, so it's not like, it's not like this, this ship sunk.
No.
My thing is, is I, I want to be well informed. I want to hear all sides, and I think there's much more to be said. I think some of this could be hammered out in our next meeting.
And, and again, I just feel like our, you know, to give, you know, a chance for our two new folks to have some of the backfill, you know, turn out.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? So right now, this is not a motion to approve or deny. This is just a motion to table this, and we can bring this back at a further meeting. All right, we'll get a roll call to vote for table.
Councilman Reynolds?
No.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilman Probst?
Yeah.
Councilman Walker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Therese?
Yes.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Our next item is a procedural motion. This is to a re, to reappointment to the Boarding and Zoning Appeals. Now this time, I'll turn the floor over to Councilman Crawford. Yes, sir. BZA?
Oh, BZA?
Yeah, we just need you to read that.
Oh, okay. So based on the procedural motions, two appointments for the BZA under chapter, is it a, basically under the city charter of 281. So in summary, John D. Miskiewicz was appointed to fill the vacancy on the Board of Appeals last year on February 22 of 2024, and was recently selected to serve as the Board's Vice Chair in 2025. His term is due to expire on April the 11th of 2025. Mr. Miskiewicz has expressed interest in being reappointed for the, for, for the full four years of the term. And Mr. Mr. David Harrison's term, uh, term on the Board of BZA, Board of Appeals, is also set to expire April 11th of 2025. Mr. Harrison was originally appointed to fill a vacancy on December the 11th of 2014 and has served consecutive terms since that time. He has expressed his desire to continue serving on the Board along with Councilman Crawford and respectfully recommends, I rec, I, Mr. Crawford respectfully recommends reappointing to a four-year terms expiring on April the 11th of 2029. And do I hear a motion for?
You can make that motion.
I can. So I'd like to make a motion specifically for Mr. JD's Miskiewicz on the Board of Appeals for the term of the expiration date of April 11th of 2029. Can I get this, and then I just go on to the second motion?
Yeah, you can do both.
Yeah.
Do both, okay. And I'd like to reappoint Mr. David Harrison to the Board of Appeals with a term of expiration date of April 11th of 2029 as well.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Probst, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any discussion or comments? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Councilman Crawford. Thank you, Councilwoman Probst. We have no other questions. We'll seek, roll call, please.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is Appointed Official Report. Mr. Lake, we'll start with you. Thank you.
I'll just remind everyone that April 15th is coming up, that's filing deadline. I'll remind the public that we do have a small Rita staff, Regional Contact Agency here, operate out of the city administration building that will, can help with doing taxes for you. But I would advise you get in earlier than later, and also that they have an excellent online filing tool, ritaohio.com. Go on there and file your payments, your taxes very easily, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lake or his staff? All right, thank you. All right, next is Law Director, Ms. Fisher.
Hello, good evening. There's one thing I wanted to share, just kind of wanted to put this on the radar for our citizens. There are currently two bills pending in the Ohio Legislature, Senate Bill 104 and House Bill 109, and they both say the same thing, and this is special interest dollars at work in Columbus. Basically, both bills will prohibit municipalities from regulating Airbnbs in any way, shape or form. So if your neighbors decide they want to rent out their house to the party house, there won't be a damn thing the city can do to help you with that. This is complete overreach by the state. I don't think it's what's best for local communities. I think we have the right to decide for ourselves how we want to regulate those. So I would strongly encourage our residents and the citizens of Xenia, reach out to Senator Collier, tell him you're against Senate Bill 104. Reach out to Representative Dean and let him know that you are against House Bill 109. Because if these pass, there's not going to be anything we can do. If we get Airbnbs in the city that are causing problems in the neighborhood, there won't be, anything we'll be able to do to help with those situations. And that was all I had.
So what protocol do we have now?
Yeah, exactly.
If there's a problem.
We, we have regulations currently. We did, we put that in two or three years ago in our job and code. Just regulating how long you can do it, how many rooms you have to have, just to really kind of minimize the impact in residential areas. If these bills pass, that's all gone.
All right, great. Thank you. Who has any questions for the Law Director tonight? Good to see you here tonight. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right, and next is Mr. Mayor. What do you have for us tonight?
Thank you. I don't think there's anything more I can add tonight.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, I don't think there's anything more I can add tonight. Are you have questions?
Nothing else?
Yes, nothing.
All right, any questions for Mr. Mayor? All right, thank you very much.
I did.
You did.
All right, great.
There's basketball.
All right, so what about a council comments? Mr. Crawford?
I only have one item, I guess, the Neighborhood Night Out. I was, I just want to say, just thank the staff, the city, the, the professional staffing, the police department, the fire department, the, you know, like, the, the information that you wanted was there. I mean, I, I, I'm not a website person. I don't like diving into websites necessarily, read and, and understand. But you could have went to this Neighborhood Night Out and got educated and, and, and inspired because the people that do the work were there. It was interesting, very interesting. I'm glad it was, I'm glad you did it. I don't want to, for myself, I, I had a blast. Thank you. I don't have anything else.
You just said that because you got a badge that's from the police department.
I did get, I did get deputized, and I got to play, I got a, I got a chance to, to operate the top secret robot from the military. It was passed down to the, to the police department, and that was, it was pretty cool. And I, I called my daughter about that, and she says they've had that for about 15 years, but she's, she was familiar with it. But, um, but she's, that's, that was a fascinating robot, the way that works for you guys. I, I'm intrigued. Anyway, I, I love our departments in the city. I just love them.
Well, thank you, deputy.
Anything for Mr. Crawford?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Reynolds?
One thing, it's Easter egg hunt is April 19th, 10:00 AM at Shawnee Park. We still have the egg drop. If you would like to donate baskets, you can drop off here or at Manuel Baptist. We have about 24 baskets right now, roughly. We'd like some more, so if you want to contribute. We typically have been here for like 60 to 50 to 60 or so, so. I want to thank Councilman Smith or President Smith for some baskets as well. I think it was 10 baskets and 1,000 eggs.
Yeah, and an extra 1,000 eggs.
An extra 1,000 eggs, so.
Did those eggs?
Plastic eggs.
Plastic.
He took, he sent their painstakingly difficult men to die.
Real eggs, that'd be about half a million dollars.
So, but that is it.
Thank you. Thank you. And your X-Rac meeting meets?
Oh, yes, X-Rac meets on Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Yep.
All right, very good. That's 5:30.
5:30, yep.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Anyone have anything for Councilman Reynolds, other than you want volunteers for the night?
Oh, yeah. We've, I've talked to some of the ex-Maxxers, we're getting some church folks, and talk to their school folks and too.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that event. Councilman Probst, you have anything tonight?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Probst. Councilman Walker?
I don't have anything as well.
Nothing tonight, and Councilwoman Therese?
Well, I also went to the Neighborhood Night Out, and I just want to say, just to go along with, I actually will agree with you. I'm really impressed with the city staff's dedication and hard work in serving our community. And I even had a great discussion with the head of our water department, and I found out that there's a natural aquifer under the pond in my front yard. Yeah, so, because I know it's over 100 foot deep. Yeah, and so they, I also got to see, they are submersible. They have a little submarine that can go down and take pictures and look at the, look in the water tank and check the level of silt that's developing. And I mean, and it's just so amazing. And how concerned they are and willing to share their information and knowledge and pass it on to the citizens. I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just such a great group of folks. And I just encourage people to get out more to activities like that because you learn so much when you're there. So thanks, thanks again to the city staff for their excellent work. I greatly appreciate everyone, and that's all.
All right, great. Thank you very much, and thank you to the council members that were able to attend that Neighborhood Night Out last Tuesday. Also, thank you for city staff for putting that event on and for Xenia Community Schools for allowing us to host that at McKinley Elementary School.
And I just have to even say, Michelle did a coloring book for the kids. She made it herself. That was fantastic. I love that. Yeah.
Very good. All right, so our next meeting is looking like it is April 10th, is that correct, for City Council? And at this time, if we have nothing else to discuss, I'll seek a motion to adjourn. I'd like to thank everyone for watching tonight and those that are in attendance.
Subdued.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Probst. We have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Therese. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Therese?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.